Next are items 10A through 10I. They all relate to the Halls Crossing development that has been discussed multiple times by this council. These agenda items involve public hearings on two annexation cases, two general plan amendments, two zoning cases, two development agreements for more than 1,100 acres of property located within the inner loop district and east of the 202 freeway. We will hold the public hearing on all of these items and take all public comment and allow the applicant to give a presentation. And then council will discuss and take action on items 10B through 10I altogether. We will first conduct the public hearing on annexation cases 18-0078 and 19-00420, minor general plan amendments 19-00754 and 19-00755, and zoning cases 17-00606 and 17-00607. And to take public comment on agenda items 10B through 10I, I declare the public hearing open. It's my understanding that we've received over 100 blue cards on this topic. All of the information in those cards have been provided to the full city council and will be included in the minutes. Because council has received and had an opportunity to read these comments, I am not going to ask that they each be read tonight. However, for the benefit of the public, Ms. Goodwin, could you provide a summary of the speakers and their comments?
Absolutely. For item 10A through 10I, 22 in support, they did not list any comments. The names are Jacob Rich-Larstam, Corinne Lemons, Christopher Norton, Sharon Brown, James Arkembalt, Sherry Ramsey, Georgette Sharon, Joshua Mount, David McKelvey, Cassandra Wood, Michael Fleur, Anne Gigi, Pious Kohenju, Linda Rich-Larstam, Anja Rich-Larstam, Clint Column, Kristen LeBaron, William Pierce, Barbara Pierce, Brian Brockman, Mark Ipsen, Weston They were in support. We have 80 in support, and I will read their comments after I mention their names. Damian Bench, Heather Dipstratton, Wayne Carr, Jeredaya Young, Casey Landrith, Scott Bartlett, Lori Rogers, John Cassarian, Molly Pierce, John Gosny, Raoul Farfan, Shelley Callaway, Andrea Hendrickson, David Gottwig, Bonnie Classen, Grant Classen, Marisa Shakfari, Valerie Farfan, Rusty Llewellyn, Chris Llewellyn, Darryl Foltz, Mark Rogers, Ron Harris, Candy Salseda, Chris Udall, Mark Nielsen, Willow Seaward, Marilyn Risco, Karen Acosta, Sarah Van Cleve, Corey Pedengill, Warren Brown, Wyatt Seward, Shelley Seward, Lee Hendrickson, Billy Maynard, Perry Hunziker, Brenda Hunziker, Alan McDonald, Peter Van Ridgen, Kim Robinson, Colton and Sarah Helms-Robinson, James and Keegan Walker, Brian and Carson Black, James and Helen Wagner, Robert McDonald, Marcy McDonald-Stevens, Darla Huff, Chatale Patel, Vikes Patel, Megan Holihy, Jody Van Ridgen, Jean McDonald-Paul, Keith McDonald, Heather McCam, Jennifer Pershing, Gwen Gunn, Kathleen Celso, Jean and Lara Bateman, Greg Guliamino, Bonnie Miller, Sherry Stewart, Gary Smith, Kathy Grissom, Todd Grissom, Shelby Grissom, Christian Clausen, Victor Riches, Jim Boyle Sr., Jordan Captry, Thomas Crabtree, Lou Huff, Mary Otto, Alexander Boyle, Courtney Everhart, Chelsea White, Clint Schuller, Amy Baxley, Jessica Price, and Brina Soori. The common responses listed were as follows for these individuals. Enrichment of the neighborhood: they were in favor of farms moving because of the smell and flies. Health issues: positive impact on family life. Strong community support to rezone. Mesa needs more residential neighborhoods. Benefits to community and surrounding communities. Progress of area and growth. Create legacy for Mesa: brings jobs, supports public schools, increases home values and improves the quality of life. In favor of light commercial for shopping and restaurants. Increase revenue for Mesa. Tech corridor in the highest and best use of the land. Location too valuable not to rezone. Proposed zoning shows initiative and forward thinking towards future progress and planning. Support growth and prosperity for all involved. Mayor and council, those were the support comments. Is he there?
Thank you, Agnes. And I'm sure there were some asking for or opposing the case as well. Can you summarize those, please?
Yes. Opposed with no comments were Artif Houdenpile, Kevin Beeson, Daniel McKinnon, Donnie Mullins, Tina Martin, Roxanne Artman, Chris Price, Peter Edmonds, Rebecca Brimhall, and Jeannie Radish-Auri. Opposed, and I will read the comments for those individuals. Alan Haney, Tristan Nihans, Dennis Brimhall, Andrea Marshall, Rich Dalton, Christopher Schmidt, Trevor Merrill, Aaron Merrill, Shannon King, Dakota Johnson, Dale Clough, Honey Lynn Terry, Charles Terry, Jonathan Enriquez, Jay Douglas. And the common responses listed were as follows for opposed. Res zoning not compatible with Boulder Creek community: does not preserve quality of life. Negatively impacts property values, increase traffic, safety of children, density is not compatible. And that's all I have, mayor.
Okay, thank you, Agnes. I'm sorry, I got the numbers for those supporting. How many cards did you receive for those opposing the zoning case?
Twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. I know that the applicant would like to speak on this, and I know we've also received approximately 13 requests from citizens to appear and speak electronically on this item. Ms. Goodwin, would you proceed with allowing the citizens that have requested to speak to do that first, and then we'll hear from the applicants?
Absolutely.
And I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have Bruce Artman on the line.
And would you remind Mr. Artman, welcome. For each, and this is true for each of our speakers, Ms. Goodwin will keep track of your time, and we're limiting this to three minutes apiece, please.
All right, thank you, mayor. I'm an original resident of Boulder Creek neighborhood. I have bought one of the Ryland models back in 1998. It was actually the first one built. Our coterie opposes the current rezoning plan, specifically the 109 acres closest to the Boulder Creek subdivision in zone 17-0060. Includes too much high-density housing. It's going to greatly increase the traffic along Bridalwood Road and in front of Boulder Creek Elementary School. It's going to have a negative impact on the comparative values of the existing homes. Now, in the last year, the area surrounding Boulder Creek has been inundated with high-density housing. On our eastern border, right across Halls Road is what appears to be RS 2.5, and that extends all the way to the 202 on both sides of Guadalupe. Now, this current rezoning proposal would add an additional 361.5 acres of residential housing, of which only 9.6% of that is zoned RS 6. Now, as far as the people that are in support of this, I think we can all agree that the dairies are a nuisance. I think this is the main problem, and the reason they support a development out there. We too do support it. I believe in the spirit of compromise, and that's why we're asking for only 109 acres of the 514 acres in the zone to be RS 6. This is a very reasonable request, given the current agricultural zoning, and ideally what the developers would like, which is the proposed 2.5 and RM 5, especially in light of all the current high-density housing already being built to the east. Now, this plan benefits the owners of the dairies, and it's designed to maximize their profits. I doubt any of them will be residents of the neighborhood, and the current and future residents will be the ones to suffer. One other thing I'd like to mention is the current plan has no mention of amenities. I'd like to propose that the existing improved powerline Western Canal Bike Trail be included as a requirement of any new development. Now, currently, the bike trail ends at Gilbert's eastern boundary, which is Power Road. Now, this would be a boon to residents. It'd be bicyclists, joggers, mothers pushing strollers. The trail passes by the southern boundary of the Riparian Reserve, the Gilbert Library. It continues past Free Stone Park and directly into downtown Gilbert. It continues west through all of the city of Gilbert and all of the city of Chandler, where it turns into the Western Canal Trail and then goes out to about 43rd Avenue. It's 30 miles in all, and this is the last segment that still has not been developed. Along the length of the trail are intersections to multiple north-south bike trails. And if you look at a map of the Mesa Bike Trails, you would see that there are no east-west routes south of the US 60. Indeed, most bike trails in Mesa are north of downtown.
Thank you, sir. I believe the three minutes is up. Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Goodwin, please proceed with the next speaker.
The next speaker is Jeanetta Davis.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I also oppose the proposed zoning for the 109 acres north of Elliott, east of 80th, and west of Halls Road for several reasons. The one I'm going to speak about tonight has to do with the Boulder Creek Elementary School. The high-density zoning of RSL 2.5 for 56 acres and RM 5 for 8 acres near the Boulder Creek Elementary School will generate additional traffic congestion that will place the schoolchildren at a higher risk for accidents and harm. Leaders need to make decisions with safety as a priority for schoolchildren. I have witnessed firsthand the terrible harm that children have suffered from car accidents. Please consider the safety needs of schoolchildren and reject the proposed zoning for these 109 acres included in zone 17-00606. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next speaker is Molly Pierce.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to be in support of the agenda items for the following reasons. One, I think Mesa has a really unique opportunity to expand its current horizon and become something truly legacy-worthy. Passing this agenda item would allow a multitude of homes, factories, and economically producing and substantial businesses to begin this great city. By passing this agenda item, the council is allowing Mesa to grow and leave a footprint on this state by being a spot-out city for businesses, housing, and again, shops and other types of businesses as well. Please pass this agenda item today so that Mesa can truly become a better city. And again, in support of the agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, the next speaker is Ralph Pugh.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to be with you tonight. I can favor the Halls Crossing project. You know, council members, it was interesting. It was 2008 when the Mesa Gateway Strategic Plan was adopted, and the inner loop area was one of the four major quadrants. And I often wondered, how would it ever develop in one single block of employment and business and mixed-use activity area expectations? This case truly brings wish and the opportunity, mayor and council, to have 17 different property owners and 50-some different property owner interests unite in one master plan that will sustain not only the jobs that were expected to be done and be created here, but also bring really important housing, because we know that employment uses do not exist in isolation in large thousand-acre tracts. And so, please adopt this case tonight, council members. It will be a major boon for Mesa. It will provide a cohesive development. There'll be thematic designs, there'll be a master plan, and most importantly, you get 17 different parcels annexed. And without that, mayor and council, I think we're going to have a bit of a mess out there in the county for a long, long time. So, we urge your support. Please let this go forward and let jobs and enterprise and business begin in the inner loop corridor. Thank you, mayor, council members.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh.
Mayor, the next speaker is Matthew Jessup.
I'm not here to speak. I'm here to answer any developer questions. I'm on the developer side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the speakers that I have for items 10A through 10I.
Okay, thank you. I know the applicant wishes to speak. Ms. Rose, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. For your record, I'm Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you. First of all, I wanted to say thank you so much to Chris Brady and Christine and Nana and Jim and Tom and Charlotte and Evan and your whole team over in Mesa. We've worked for four years on this project, and we are just so honored to be here tonight with our dairy families. There's 17 families, 52 entities, and so much public support. I think your clerk just noted 102 letters in support just today, and I know you've gotten almost 1,000 over the last many years. I have personally never been involved in a zoning case with so much support, so I thank you to the community, and I think this is really a model of how progress should happen. I have a brief presentation that I think Nana is going to help me implement if that works. And because you're delayed for me, maybe, Nana, if you just lift up your hand, and I can see if we're on with the presentation.
Yes, it looks like it's up, Ms. Jordan. I'm sorry.
All right, perfect. No, thank you, mayor. Thank you so much. And thank you, Nana. I'm going to just kind of go through my presentation, and I know the visual delay is sort of strange, so I apologize if I'm either ahead or behind of him. So, the dairies are really at a crossroads right now. They either are going to put tens of millions of dollars into the locations, and they'll remain there for another 20 or 30 years, because that's the life of a dairy, or they are doing what they're doing tonight, which is they wisely plan the land for a mixed-use development, and they want to leave a legacy for their future generations. I have some photos here that I think will come up on the screen of the massive redevelopment opportunity, and I know everyone has driven by there and citizens have driven by, you know, on the freeway with the paintball and the lot splits. And it's really a situation that is in a transition. So luckily, we have 52 property interests and 17 owners, and I'm hopeful that PowerPoint has caught up with me. And four years of progress. We have gone through 29 different land plans, believe it or not. And if we flip to the slide that shows the 2016 plan, I'll show you what a long, I will not go through all 29 tonight, but I will show you what a long way we've come. In 2016, when we started, we had a plan that showed 83% residential and 17% non-residential mix. Through discussions and lots of conversations, and some tense and some happy and some, all sorts of things, but we have now today before you is 44% residential and 56% remains non-residential in Mesa. I wanted to just go through a couple things that we've changed in the last several months since talking with the council the last time. There will be no standalone residential within 200 feet of Elliott Road, and I know that was very important to the council, to preserve that corridor. There will be a 30-foot utility corridor designation down Halls Road there on the side, and that will be important for power needs to the south. And then, some of the opposition, I think there is some misinformation out there in that our property to the south of Boulder Creek is being zoned R6, which mirrors the R6 that is next to the Boulder Creek subdivision. And I think that's probably why, and you can flip to the presentation slide with the 700 letters of support and some arrows, but it's probably why we have such support. And we've been very thankful to Boulder Creek for their patience and working with us. You can see on this slide, from Boulder Creek to Halls Crossing, where I think there's a misnomer that RSL 2.5 is somehow twice as dense as the RS 6. While the densities are not capped in Mesa, the RS 6 represents about 7.26 units per acre, and the RSL 2.5 represents about 9.5 units per acre. But in any case, Halls Crossing is quite far of distance from any RSL 2.5. And in fact, Boulder Creek is closer to currently zoned industrial uses, and it's closer to an apartment multifamily to the east, and you can see that in that presentation slide. The slide that we're on now is showing, all those blue dots, those were just the residents that signed petitions in support. Those aren't even the letters of support, and that's in Boulder Creek to our north. And you can see the five people who have commented in opposition, and I believe there's six now, so I apologize, I don't have that person, but as I tried to chart who spoke and who we've seen, it looks like there's six residents. We tried to have a dialogue with all the ones that we had contact information, which were these five, and only one responded. They had some inaccurate information, but they did not want to discuss. So, let's switch to the next slide, I think, or go back one if you don't mind, Nana. I won't read all these resident support letters, but I did think this one excerpt was worth reading. And it says, "Mesa is such a forward-looking city. Here you have 1,200 acres and 17 families coming together, and to not allow them to proceed would be a colloquial error. I would think we would be thanking these dairymen for spending millions of dollars and coordinating with state lands so that Mesa can control 1,000 acres that's currently in the county. Plus, Mesa commissioned their own study, and that taxpayer-funded study suggested this precise land use configuration." And so, I would just start to conclude by saying we have over 700 signatures in support. We have a great example of community partnership and participation, and I would put this up against any, any project in the state to say this has just been a wonderful participation effort, while frustrating sometimes, still wonderful in the outcome. Mesa even hired their best of the best in private planners and Elliott D. Pollock and Company, the economic development consultant, to plan this land. And Halls Crossing and these dairymen and the state land department adopted that Mesa-funded recommended plan. We've worked with the airport, and I really thank them for all of their patience, and they are in a position of non-opposition. I would also just note that 54% of Mesa's total land area is within an AOA. We are AOA 3, which does not prohibit residential. And then finally, to end, I would, I really want to point out that Mesa, with this annexation tonight, will control 979 acres of land that's currently in Maricopa County. And so, on behalf of the, and Nana, you can flip to the last slide, I'm not sure my visual is at the same level as where you are, but in any case, on behalf of the 52 property interests, 17 owners, and the state land department, we have a sincere thank you to everyone who's been involved in planning this innovative opportunity. And I would take any questions from council. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Before we proceed, Ms. Goodwin, we received a message that Natasha Obondo-Karachi had submitted a card to speak and was not called on. Can you help us know if we can locate her and give her that opportunity?
Yes, we have someone checking in now. I did have her on the list, as well as Jim Boyle. So, there's two people that were on the list and for some reason unknown.
They haven't called in, mayor. We're trying to make sure they're on the phone so we can have them speak.
Okay.
We're checking on that right now, but so we have, the two names, as Agnes just mentioned, are Jim Boyle and Natasha. So, we're going upstairs right now to make sure we have a connection with them.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll proceed, and then hopefully before the vote, we will have the opportunity to hear from them.
Mayor, I believe Boyle is on the line.
Okay, thank you. Let's proceed with hearing from Mr. Boyle then.
Hi, thank you, city council members. This is Jim Boyle, one of the dairy farmers. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, mayor. So, I just wanted to kind of represent the dairy farmers and explain some of our situation of how we came in to be in this position. But first, just a little background about myself. I grew up on roll-off dairy until I was four years old in North Mesa, which gave, you know, mountain view, the nickname of Mountain Q to a lot of people around it. And my family's been dairy farming in Arizona for 100 years. We've dairy farmed in Glendale and Phoenix and Gilbert and Higley and Mesa, and we've always been proud of what we've left behind when we've moved on to somewhere else. And we had that very much in mind when we got together with our neighbors who sat there. All of our dairies were built about the same time in the late 70s. They're getting old, they need to be remodeled or refurbished or expanded, just because of the nature of the dairy industry. So, when we got this together, we were like, well, let's see this option, try to do something different, to move on and better the city of Mesa. So, that was always in our mind for this whole process, is to, one, create something that would leave a lasting legacy behind. So, I think we've done, we've done that, we've created a really nice plan, and I really look forward to helping develop this part of Mesa in the future. But the other thing I'd like to say is those of us in the county do have other options that I think that have to be kept in mind. We have both rural residential zoning underlying us, we have industrial in some areas of the county. You know, the economics of the dairy industry, it makes it sometimes hard to dairy this close to town. Some of the owners may have to do something different. And what that does with existing county zoning may not be in Mesa's best interest, just simply because I think I've always got the sense that above-ground storage and rural residential and things like that are not exactly what the city of Mesa is looking forward to. So, I think in, we've created a really great plan, and I think we should all be proud of it as landowners, and I think the city of Mesa should be proud to have worked with us to create something that I think is going to have a really long-lasting legacy for the city of Mesa. So, thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Have we been able to locate Natasha?
Yes, she's on the line.
Thank you, please proceed.
Hi, this is Natasha Obondo-Karachi. I am chair of the City of Mesa Economic Development Advisory Board, a business owner in this community, and have been a resident of Mesa for most of my life. On behalf of the volunteer members of the City of Mesa Economic Development Advisory Board, I'm here to present our board's opposition to the Halls Crossing project. The Economic Development Advisory Board is chartered to advise the Mesa City Council on matters pertaining to economic development. Our board is unanimously opposed to the Halls Crossing project for several reasons. First, this project places residential uses next to significant SRP transmission lines, which have attracted companies ranging from Apple to Google along the Elliott Road Tech Corridor. Placing housing along these strategic assets is not consistent with the city's vision for economic growth in the Elliott Tech Corridor. Secondly, the future growth of the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport will be impinged by a proliferation of housing in its flight path. This airport is one of the most significant physical and economic assets in the Southeast Valley and a billion-dollar economic driver that continues to flourish. The growth of this airport must be protected. This project does not have a master developer, so there is no guarantee that there will be a cohesive development. Once the land is entitled, it can manifest as a hodgepodge of random housing projects, and that is of concern. And lastly, we're opposed to this project because of the opportunity cost. No one will tell you how Halls Crossing will impact future business opportunities, for there is no formula to calculate opportunity loss. How do we measure not landing Microsoft, not securing the Cardinal Stadium, or missing the opportunity to attract the next Fortune 500 company? As business leaders, we know that not having the product to sell means it can't be sold. In these uncertain economic times, it's more important than ever to make the right decisions for the future of our city. The COVID-19 crisis has made it epically clear that a proliferation of housing without city property taxes is not the path to financial stability for our city. This crisis has also reminded us that our reliance- This crisis has also reminded us that our reliance upon sales taxes and building permit fees is also not a viable financial pathway forward. We must be visionary, we must bring permanent high-wage jobs to our city in order to attract industry. This project does not meet the economic goals of the city and wastes a fantastic opportunity to create growth that truly benefits the entire city and not the special interests of a few. Thank you so much for your time and for your patience with our technical difficulties.
Thank you, Natasha, and thank you for your service on the Economic Development Advisory Board.
Mayor, I have one more.
Yes.
Carrie Davis was supposed to call in. I'm not sure if they're on the line.
Is Carrie Davis on the line? Okay, well, we have another agenda item, you know, relative to this case, and so if that individual does make it on the phone, we'll do our best to provide an opportunity for them to be heard before the vote is cast. All right, so just a reminder where we're at. We're currently on the agenda item for the public hearing. We've now heard from, I believe, all of the individuals that have requested to speak. There may be one person outstanding that we'll hope to hear from before we vote. Do any council members wish to address this item under the public hearing? Yes, Mr. Thompson.
Mayor, I have a statement for the overarching, I guess, for the entire 10 agenda item. So in 1998, the residents of Mesa overwhelmingly supported a charter amendment that broke the city into districts. And in 2000, the city had its first election by districts. I can only believe that this was done because the city was growing at such a rate that the council felt it best to have a representative for each area that would represent their entire district as a whole, who would understand the nuances and to do overall what's best for their district. Since I took the oath of office in 2015, I can honestly say that every decision I've made for projects in District 6 has been done and continues to be done with the long-term betterment of District 6 in mind, with the promise of creating economic opportunities for our residents, with the general plan as my guide, with the determination that in 10 to 20 years from now, the citizens can continue to be proud of the decisions made on their behalf. Since I was elected to office in 2014 and sworn into office in January 2015, I have been a proponent of economic development. I've always been honest and open about that. I ran on the platform of bringing quality jobs to our city because I believe our citizens deserve jobs that are paying livable wages. In fact, since I was sworn into office, we have had over $5 billion in capital investment from businesses moving to District 6 and over $40 million in non-residential impact fees. This didn't come because of happenstance, but rather by developing a vision. Elliott Road started way before any of us were on council. It started with previous councils that saw the benefit of investing in infrastructure and pushing back against residential encroachment on the airport. When I was first elected, I began building on that vision, but I also started working on a vision for the rest of District 6. It started for me when I sat down with property owners, zoning attorneys, and developers. Not only did I build on the technology corridor, but also our heavy industrial corridor, and most recently the SR24 corridor, as well as the Ray Road corridor and the advanced manufacturing corridor directly south of the airport. I have said no to many projects because they didn't fit into that vision. So what is my vision? My vision is one that promotes quality development, one that promotes economic development, and one that protects and supplements one of the largest assets within the East Valley and the region, Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. But Mesa is lucky to have two airports. In fact, in a May 2014 article in The Republic, the reporter wrote, "Falcon Field is as much a part of Mesa's DNA as the old city cemetery that cradles 24 allied airmen who died at the field in training for World War II. But as the airport approaches its 75th anniversary, heavy crosswinds threaten its status as one of the busiest general aviation fields in the country. For months, the airport has been targeted, the target of noise complaints from neighbors, particularly irate over the operation of a recently expanded flight school." You see, over the years, councils allowed residential encroachment to overtake Falcon Field. And the end result was that the council buckled under the pressure of the few residents who complained, and subsequently asked CIE to shift a good portion of their flight operations to Gateway. In fact, the residential project that Recker and Thomas is being continued so that one of the largest employers in Mesa, Boeing, can negotiate their abilities to survive the onslaught of what drove them out of California and to Mesa in the first place. We talk about the potential of the airport and the land around it. In fact, Mayor, you and I met with a non-airport business that plans to bring upwards of 12 F-16 fighter jets to Gateway to support daily military training over some of the military ranges in Arizona. Wait until those take off in 15-second intervals at full afterburner. Manager Brady and I met with the landowner at Ellsworth and Ray. During that meeting, there was a discussion about the East Terminal and how we would like to bring two more carriers to Gateway. At our study session on December 9, Airport Director O'Neill said, quote, "One could challenge that 10 years from now, if we outgrow our old commercial passenger terminal on the west side and move to a new facility on the east side, the flight pattern across the region is going to change dramatically. And we have always been concerned with residential encroachment." He went on to say, "I am right there with you when we talk about residential encroachment and the long-term impact it can have to the region." When I asked Mr. O'Neill, "At what point should we just throw our hands up and close the airport?", Mr. O'Neill responded that, quote, "We would never throw our hands up and just close the airport. There are impacts to the community and there are impacts to the airport with residential encroachment. There are modifications to flight patterns, there are restrictions that communities have put on airports. Is this really the future of our airport? Because we are so narrow-minded to see the big picture and the bright future ahead? Will the dream of having a reliever airport in the East Valley become a reality if the airport has restricted operations and hours? What about Skybridge? Will they be hampered by flight restrictions? Everyone knows the cargo was primarily an overnight operation, and the airport director himself agreed during the same study session noted above that there will be an impact to operations. The fact is, Skybridge does have concerns and is not supportive of this project as it is. However, when it was discovered that they were penning a letter, Sky to publicly oppose this project, a phone call was made, and they were promptly told to stand down. Mayor, at your state of the city, you touted the fact that Elliott Road is now bookended with Apple and Google. So why now would you want the books in between to be merely paperbacks instead of really great novels? I can tell you the city's Economic Development Advisory Board and the Mesa Chamber of Commerce both understand the difference between a cheap paperback and a great novel. It has been mentioned several times by the applicant that more than 50% of the land is carved out as employment, but that's dependent on how eager state land is to sell. There are no guarantees they are ready to sell, and we all know that state land can't prezone land. That means land can be auctioned off to a developer that's willing to pay the most, and depending on the P&amp;Z and council that's in office at the time can be zoned as mixed-use residential, which we know is nothing more than lots of apartments with a smattering of retail like Burger King and McDonald's. Again, a paperback or a novel? While on the topic of zoning, I'd like to draw attention to the language of the text on this agenda item. How many of you believe that a change in zoning from employment to residential on such a massive amount of land should be considered a minor general planned amendment? Honestly, changing the complete characteristics of that much land on a document that was voted on and approved by all the citizens of Mesa is not a minor amendment, but rather a major deviation from what the voters approved. A yes vote tonight doesn't eliminate the smell, it doesn't eliminate the flies and the unsightly storage in the area. I believe the residents have been sold on a movie from just a snippet of a trailer. They are touchpoints that the zoning attorney has done a phenomenal job of discovering. Would the residents be upset to know that the smell and the flies will still be lingering? In fact, the largest dairy, Arizona Farms, is not part of this project, so you will still have flies and you will still have the smell. Additionally, there is no requirement for the dairies to mitigate the organics and leech ponds that are there now. So the smell and flies will be there indefinitely until developers willing to come in, buy the property, and remove the top three or four feet of soil and replace it. The Paintball property and the storage you see along Sauserman are not part of this project, so you continue to have what many refer to as ice swords. Let's talk about public safety as well. We haven't kept pace with public safety as we've grown and added Mountain Ranch, Bella Villa, Eastmark, or Cadence. In fact, would you be upset as a citizen to know that the largest-beaten Mesa, Beet 77, is typically staffed with one patrol officer, depending on call-out, vacations, and training? Beet 77 stretches from the US 60 to Jermaine and from Meridian to Ellsworth. So if you're one of the 85,000 residents that live in Augusta Ranch, Sierra Ranch, Grisman Creek, East Ridge, Centarita Ranch, Mesquite Canyon Ranch, Mulberry, Sunland Springs, Meridian Point, Mountain Heights, Bella Villa, Gila River Ranches, Eastmark, Cadence, or many of the businesses that are in that beat, do you think that Mesa has kept up with growth? What about Gilbert Public Schools? Where will all those kids funnel? Have you seen a plan for a school of any type? At our strategic planning session, there was a lot of talk around the table about changing our perception of as being a bedroom community and really pushing for jobs. When the mediator asked me for my input, I simply said, "It's easy to say, but if there's no action, then it's nothing more than lip service. Is the vote tonight just more lip service, or is this the change that you all talked about making?" Just this past January, Denver International Airport and the city of Denver filed a lawsuit against Aurora to stop plans for single-family homes that would be built within a mile of the airport's next planned runway. Denver City Council obviously has the vision to clearly understand the impact that residential encroachment will have on the success of their airport. I just hope this council has a similar vision and will take a stand and vote against Hodge Crossing and the addition of neighborhoods within proximity of Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. Privately, purveyors of airport services truly believe this will have a negative impact on operations, but are afraid to say so publicly for fear of political repercussion. For 20 years, city councils before us have had the wisdom to protect Gateway Airport from encroachment. They have protected it even when it wasn't politically expedient. Where is another crossroad in protecting the airport? I am casting my vote against this project because I know it is the right thing to do for our community and to protect the investment made by past councils in the protection of airport operations. I invite my colleagues to put aside political donations, endorsements, promises, and let you unite against this encroachment on southeast Mesa and the region's major economic driver. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Are there other council comments under the public hearing section? Ms. Rose, do you have any additional information to offer?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, to address some of the comments that were made. First of all, I did want to, I appreciate that EDAB would be here tonight. I wanted to note that they were, they considered our plan before it was complete or submitted, and I think much has changed. But in any case, I thought I would address a couple of the issues that were brought up. First of all, it is a minor plan amendment because we're just changing a very small portion of the general plan, and we're in conformance with the rest. You can certainly talk to your planning director about that. In addition, I am surprised by the comments about the airport. The airport is testified to you in your council study session just very recently. In fact, I can quote Ryan Smith when was asked about airport support. He said, "Yes, so all of the residential developments proposed to this would be in our AOA 3, and based on our airport land use compatibility plan, any type of residential, whether it's multifamily or single-family, is permitted in that AOA 3." And the council member said, "Okay, and so you're not opposed to that?" And he said, "No, no, again, we've worked with the communities in developing these overlay areas as well as the compatibility plan and the zoning overlay, so it's been done in coordination with one another." I would also comment that this tonight is 17 families and state land coming together to allow Mesa to control this land. If this annexation doesn't happen, the advantage to Mesa is no property taxes and no control of future uses. And ignoring the 700 people in the community who have come out and really participated for so long, for four years, saying, "Please do this because it's good," and frankly, ignoring the land use plan that you paid taxpayer money for, to the best planners and economic development folks in the private sector to come up with a plan that made sense for Mesa. And the dairymen adopted that. And so today, it seems to be great upside to the city to try to annex. In fact, the Elliott Pollack study indicates that this 56% of non-residential property will provide 100,000 jobs. It's an amazing opportunity and one that, in most places, I don't think would be there. But because of the great community support and the 17 families banding together with state land for so long, we're giving the city of Mesa this great opportunity to create a vibrant place that's well-planned for decades to come. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. City staff, Nana, is there anything that's been said that you, that would provoke some sort of comment from you? Are you, have any additional information to offer on this matter?
Mayor, members of the council, so I just want to give you kind of a little summary of how staff came to our recommendation of the plan before you. We utilized data and information to basically come up with a recommendation of approval. What I mean by that is we used the 2008 Mesa Gateway Study that was done actually before anybody thought about this project coming before council. And one of the requirements of that Mesa Gateway Plan was for us to actually do a detailed study of the inner loop area to determine the allocation of land uses and how in location of those uses are going to be compatible to the Mesa Gateway Airport operation. And so based on that, that was how, why we conducted a detailed study in 2018, which was a inner loop study that basically considered all the various sub-area plans and various studies that had been done, which included the Mesa Gateway Airport Compactability Study, which was actually completed in 2018. And it also considered the general plan, which had the designation or character designation of mixed-use activity and employment. So the goals of the general plan for the area, the Mesa Gateway Strategic Plan, and a detailed study, which was very specific to the data and analysis that they actually used to really come up with a recommendation, including all the citizen participation process and even including various departments in the city to come up with a recommendation. So based on that, and in addition, this plan actually came before staff back in 2016, and staff decided or recommended to the applicant to put a stop or hold the application until we are able to get thorough, detailed analysis and information to guide our recommendation. So we did not make arbitrary recommendations before you. We used data, analysis, and information to basically make the recommendation before you. And the plan also went through several iterations with the applicant. We went back and forth so many months as well. So that's why we were able to come to a resolution of making a recommendation of approval before you.
Okay, thank you, Nana. Council, any questions for the applicant or for city staff or any additional comments? You know, I'll take the opportunity to share some thoughts. I first spoke to the applicants on this project over two years ago and made it clear at that time that the protection of Gateway Airport was the most important consideration to any land use decision. Protecting the airport from residential encroachment, as you know, has been and remains a decades-old, non-negotiable priority with the city of Mesa. At that time, the applicants agreed to rethink their land planning, but also pointed out that the noise contours around the airport had changed and that the somewhat arbitrary line of the power lines for restricting residential development might be hard to justify now. They also pointed out that prohibiting any residential on over 1,000 acres hadn't been done anywhere else before because it's likely not good city planning. While this part of Mesa, because of its proximity to the airport and freeway, is perfect for industrial and commercial land uses, it may not be realistic to think that it could or should develop exclusively that way. We agreed that planning shouldn't be rushed and that experts should be hired to assist the city planning staff in reevaluating this important and fast-growing part of our city. So, as Nana mentioned, the city hired land use experts to help us plan this area. They studied not just the 1,200 acres in this zoning case, but also the couple thousand additional additional acres next door. The guiding principles given to the land planners were to, at all costs, protect the viability of the airport and the opportunities for employment. The applicants, at that time, agreed to wait and rather than fight against the city, instead to design a proposal that conformed with the recommendations of the land use study. After a significant study, including public and neighborhood outreach and consulting with business and airport development experts, the recommendations were that there are, in fact, strategic parts of this area that should not be developed as residential, particularly the freeway corridors, inside AOA 1 and 2 noise corridors, and the Elliott Road Tech corridor. There are, however, within this very large area, places where residential will not threaten the airport or the potential for large-scale employment. In fact, residential development should be welcomed in some specific areas. Of course, any residential needs to be the right type with noise attenuation features, navigation easements, and deed restrictions. I understand why this new plan raises questions for some interested observers of Mesa city planning policies. As I indicated, I've been a staunch defender of the airport since serving on this council in the 1990s when the Air Force handed the keys for Williams Air Force Base at the City of Mesa. Back then, we routinely had tough zoning cases where we said no to applicants who wanted to build homes near the airport because these proposals were contrary to the city's master plan. City staff recommended denial of those cases, and the airport routinely opposed those cases. None of those concerns are present with this case. In fact, the opposite is true. This proposal was crafted to be in compliance with the updated master plan, has the support of city staff, and has addressed the operational concerns of the airport. The emphasis is on protecting the commercial and industrial assets in the area and creating jobs. The estimate is that 55,000 jobs will be located within the boundaries of this zoning case. In the appropriate areas, locating a reasonable amount of housing to support those jobs makes sense. And so I want to thank the applicants for their patience and their willingness to compromise and change their proposals dramatically many times in order to accomplish the city's goal for master planning and annexing over 1,100 acres in this area. And as a result, I will be enthusiastically supporting this case. Agnes, were we ever able to locate that other speaker?
Yes, we have Carrie Davis on the line.
Thank you. Please proceed, Carrie.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I oppose rezoning 109 acres of the 514 acres included in Zone 17-6006. The proposed rezoning is not compatible with the Boulder Creek neighborhood. Only 35 acres of the 109 acres north of Elliott between Hawes and Eightieth will retain RSL zoning. 56 acres will be rezoned RSL 2.5 and 8 acres rezoned for apartments. This is more than twice the existing density and does not preserve the quality of life for Boulder Creek and will negatively impact property values. Increased traffic will raise the level of risk for Boulder Creek Elementary School children. I request the 109 acres be rezoned RSL 6 to be consistent with Boulder Creek. During the start and end of the school day, the Boulder Creek neighborhood is already impacted with traffic congestion. Increasing the density by more than twice the existing Boulder Creek neighborhood with RSL 2.5 and apartments will only magnify the problem. I do not believe it is best practice to place children at risk with new developments. The zoning appears to be designed to increase the land value for the Haws Crossing landowners at the expense of Boulder Creek residents. Apartments seldom result in increased property value for neighboring single-family residents. Apartment tenants do not have pride of ownership because they tend to be transitory. I'm sure you're aware of the recent murder in an apartment complex near the Morrison Ranch neighborhood. I understand the Rose Law Firm is working on behalf of the landowners, and they are arguing in favor of increased density, but the city council should represent the interest of current and future residents. The high-density housing proposed near the airport will also create a future problem for the airport with noise and pollution complaints. These complaints will be expensive and time-consuming to litigate. This can be avoided with a better zoning design by planning for the future instead of only designing to achieve the highest value for the landowners. The Haws Crossing development comprises over 1,000 acres, and the 109 acres we are asking to be rezoned R6 is the only area of the development in such close proximity to an existing residential neighborhood. The high-density zoning and increased traffic flow will negatively impact our community. Please reject the proposed zoning. As a resident of Boulder Creek, I believe a better plan for the 109 acres should be given consideration due to the future long-term impact of the development. The planning and zoning, I believe, only voted 3 to 2, not a very strong commitment, not a unanimous support for it. And I don't believe that 1,000-acre rezoning would not seem to qualify as a minor general planned amendment. That's a very large redevelopment of a significant area. Thank you for allowing me to speak at this hearing. Good day.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for stepping up to speak. All right, council, before we close the public hearing, any additional comments? Mr. Thompson?
I just want to make one, and that is so that everyone knows that between Cadence and Eastmark combined, a total buildout, there's going to be over 10,000 residential units. That doesn't include any multifamily at all. So when you look at housing for those coming here seeking jobs, I think there's going to be plenty of housing in the area. And also, when you look at the housing that surrounds the dairies as well.
Thank you. Council, anything else before we close the public hearing? All right, Agnes, and any additional speakers from the public?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I declare the public hearing closed. We'll now take action on items 10B through 10I, which are the two annexation cases, two general plan amendments, two zoning cases, and two development agreements for the Haws Crossing development. At the end of this discussion, I will ask for one motion as to all of these items. Again, Agnes, do we have any requests to speak on these agenda items?
No speakers, Mayor.
Thank you. Do any council members wish to address these items? All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve items 10B through 10I involving the two annexation cases, two general plan amendments, two zoning cases, and two development agreements for the Haws Crossing development? I believe Mr., thank you. Mr. Freeman's made a motion seconded by Councilmember Duff. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Given that we are doing this remotely, it is necessary for me to take a roll call vote. I vote aye. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Heredia?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Nay.
Thank you. The motion passes six ayes and one nay.